Join me in the pleasurable legion.
My pleasurable legion is to the like of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as far off.
Could you remain standing for more recital? Thank you very much. Please silence, phone, paper, and other voice. Item number one, citizen concern. Do we have anybody that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Now, keep them up here and tell what your name and address, please.
Yes. My name is Tammy Mullenix. My address is sixteen forty-nine Old Highway one forty-one, Sergeant Bluff. It's out between the Sheriff's Training Center and the White Horse Patrol. And my concern is the two hazardous pipelines that are being proposed that are to be put in right in that half a mile from my residence, okay, both lines. And I'm concerned about the safety of them. I'm concerned about the fact that the private companies, my understanding is these are private companies, serving private consumers, selling to a private customer, and they're filing for eminent domain. And I'm concerned about the property values in the area. So, I didn't know if the board could help delay this, if they could petition to the state. I understand this is a state decision. I don't know. What do you guys know? How can you help me?
I'm not convinced that this project has board approval or board support. I don't support it. I don't think anybody else does. We've got, I have not talked to one landowner yet that is in favor of it. As I understand it, the eminent domain is a little more difficult to get for a private entity rather than a government one. I guess my advice is to be in close contact with the Iowa Utilities Board.
I filed my objection already, but I don't know, I didn't know if there's anything at the board level, if you guys can petition at any level or as a county.
Very, very little. We, the state has basically taken the teeth away from us, but is my understanding correct, Mr. Whitman?
Well, the decision on whether or not the eminent domain is granted is at the state level, right? Not something that the, this board could do anything about. I mean, there probably would be the option of submitting a comment like anyone else beyond that.
But doesn't it go through county land too? Isn't it proposed to go through county land too?
They wanted permission to run a survey team through the county farm, yes.
Right, so now's the chance.
We denied that.
Okay, you did. So, I mean, you guys as a board can make an objection for your own land too, right?
Essentially, last week's action, unless we seconded, did so.
Okay. So, I was at the public meeting last Tuesday night. Is that the thirtieth? Yes. So, I'm just maybe catching up with the second one, and maybe you've heard this from the first one. But, yeah, so I'm just here asking if there's any way you guys can also petition or object or whatever that can be done at this level. So, I mean, honestly, you go to the public meeting and it's disheartening. They're already talking about eminent domain. They're already telling you this is what they're going to do. They don't talk about if it's approved. They act as if they have approved it. So, I don't know. That's why I'm here. I don't have any other else to say, I guess, but I'm just asking if there's anything you guys can do on your, from your perspective, so.
In essence, we're doing what we can with what we have.
Okay. Otherwise, it's all at the state level.
Yeah.
Okay. By three people deciding that at the Iowa Utilities.
If you want to petition more people to contact them or ask other people to do it, that's about the only extent that I can see is an appeal.
I've reached out to every neighbor I know. I mean, I'm doing that little grassroots effort, but I've only got so many people in my base that I can, that I know, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gill, should we move ahead to the set time of four thirty-five?
Yes.
We have a board administration item, a set time of four thirty-five, public hearing and sale of property parcel ending in zero zero one, also known as thirty-four zero six forty-fourth Street. The public hearing is now open. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of or against the selling of this property?
Mr. Chair, I wonder if the public hearing will close?
Sure.
Do you want to speak in favor of the sale of the property or against the sale?
Or do you want to make a bid?
I'm looking for a bid.
Okay.
So therefore, hearing done. I move the public hearing to close.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Reddick to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose say nay. Is Matthew on the phone?
That's Matthew.
Did Matthew vote?
Yes, he said aye.
Okay. Pose say nay. Passes four to zero. Now, do we have anybody that would like to bid on this item? Sir, come up and identify yourself and give your address, please, and your opening bid.
Forty-three thirty-five Van Buren.
What's your name, sir?
Drake Kleinlein.
Drake. And what is your opening bid, sir?
Four hundred.
Four hundred. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to bid on this same property?
Just come on up and state your name, address, and the bid.
Jordan Brumman, twenty-four ten Douglas Street, opening bid five hundred.
Okay. Are there any counter bids? Anybody else who would like to bid on the property? Name and address, please, and your opening bid, sir.
My name is Moises Aragon from forty-three thirty-seven Van Buren. And I didn't hear how much he said about it.
He said five hundred.
Five hundred and six hundred, and I go six hundred.
Okay. What's your first name again?
Moises. M-O-I-S-E-S.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to bid, sir?
You guys can just almost stay up there if you're gonna.
Yep, I, seven hundred.
Seven hundred? Is there anybody else who would like to bid?
I go a thousand.
One thousand?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred? Fifteen hundred going once. Fifteen hundred going twice. I move to sell the property for fifteen hundred dollars to Moises Aragon. Motion by DeWitt, second by Taylor to sell the property for fifteen hundred to this gentleman. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose say nay. Property is sold. Heather, how do you want to do that? Are you going to deal with him now?
Yeah, we already talked a moment, so he's taking, next thing I see.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. All right, going. Item number three, approval of the, yes, approval of the agenda.
I'll move that.
Motion by Reddick, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose say nay. Passes four to zero.
Mr. Chair, I wonder, any other citizen concerns before we move on?
No.
I just didn't know if anybody else was here to.
Anybody else have any citizen concerns? Items four through ten constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four is approval of the minutes of the November thirty meeting. Five, approval of claims. Six, building services, approval of items to be auctioned per personal property disposition policy. Seven is human resources. A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate hiring process. C, approve retiree request to remain on vision and dental coverage. D, approve renewal paperwork for Woodbury County's medical plan for being submitted for signature. Eight, community and economic development, receive the first quarter report from Simco for fiscal year FY two thousand and twenty-two. Nine, is secondary roads, approve the underground utility permit for Mid-American Energy. And ten, board administration, approval of lifting the tax suspension for petitioners who failed to recertify their income or income does not qualify for continued tax suspension. Do you have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion by Reddick, second by Taylor to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose say nay. Passes four to zero. We are again moving on a set time of four forty. Public hearing on an ordinance relating to the assessment of wind energy conversion property as authorized by Iowa Code, chapter four twenty-seven B dot two-six.
Mr. Gill, like, sir?
Yes, sir. David Glazer, Community Economic Development Director. Excuse me.
You got the personnel transactions?
Yeah, but none that has to be signed.
That was awesome. All right. Well, supervisors, in the last few years, we've noticed a number of our neighboring counties make public announcements regarding their success with large-scale commercial wind developments. And as you know, this prompted us as a county to better prepare ourselves for these types of projects. In doing so, we adopted an ordinance to ensure our county has protections and assurances to safely and effectively cite and decommission these projects if they should ever happen to occur. This ensures that the roads, bridges, and personal property in our county are restored to their original state in the event that damages occur during the construction or demolition phase of these projects. Prior to the pandemic overtaking our news feeds, you'll likely recall the emphasis we as a state had as it relates to a focused shift towards renewable energy. This can be demonstrated simply by flipping through the pages of the June two thousand and nineteen issue of Iowa County, which is a monthly magazine published by Iowa State Association of Counties. I've got a copy for the board if you'd like to take a look or for anyone in the public. But this entire issue was dedicated to the topic of wind energy in Iowa counties. Numerous best practices and resources from counties across the state were highlighted, as well as data and policies enacted in Iowa by clean energy champions such as Governor Edwards and Senator Chuck Grassley, who have helped establish Iowa's national leadership position in wind energy generation. It's not just our state government and our utility partners that support this strategy. Other significant stakeholders, such as the Iowa Farm Bureau, are also making investments and creating opportunities to create clean energy and provide a significant ROI for their members and community partners. This can be evidenced in the article published by the Iowa Farm Bureau this summer in July. And that said, tonight's public hearing for this particular agenda item is really a companion piece to the commercial wind turbine ordinance that we passed earlier this year. With this ordinance, what it would do is it would simply provide a special valuation of wind energy conversion property, which includes the entire wind plant, wind turbine, tower, electrical equipment, pad mount, transformers, power lines, substation, et cetera. Wind energy conversion property first assessed on or after the effective date of the proposed ordinance would be valued by our county assessor for property tax purposes under the follow exemption schedule. It would be zero percent of the net acquisition cost for the first assessment year. It would then increase by five percent each assessment year until the seventh and succeeding assessment years, which are then capped at thirty percent. Now, some might look at this exemption schedule and say that's a really big advantage for the developer, and why would you willingly not collect seventy percent? What most people do not understand is how different and how important the tax classification for these items are. Without the four twenty-seven B ordinance, Iowa law requires these wind turbine items to be assessed by the state as a utility. It'd be subject to the state rollback and would come back to the county in the form of replacement tax revenue. This would be considerably less than what the county could receive if it adopted this four twenty-seven B ordinance. As a utility, we would also be prohibited from using tax increment financing, so we would lose the ability to tip these structures and capture any new incremental taxes to help support the project or other economic development projects that we may identify. However, under the four twenty-seven B ordinance, these items would be put into the property tax classification, which would allow the county assessor to value them at the percentages established by Iowa Code, and the amount of revenue the county would receive is substantially greater than it would be as a replacement tax. And so, to illustrate this point, I'm just going to give a made-up wind turbine project, say a hundred megawatt generation capacity. Using the replacement tax formula, a one-hundred megawatt project would generate roughly two hundred and ten thousand dollars annually for the county. Now, keep in mind that this is based on production, so you have to take that into account, because if the wind doesn't blow, they won't be producing any energy, and that means our revenues will be lower. Under the same four twenty-seven B ordinance, that same one hundred megawatt project would generate roughly one million dollars annually. That's using the seventh-year thirty percent cap. So, for the first six years, it's obviously going to be less. But when you compare the revenue that the county would receive under these two scenarios, using the forty-year life of the project, it would generate eight point four million dollars as a replacement tax, whereas the four twenty-seven B would generate forty million dollars. In addition to that, the state has already warned local governments that the replacement tax is going away in three years. So, this is important, because if a developer is successful in assembling the land in our county, and they submit a complete application to us within the next three years, there's a strong likelihood that we may not realize any new revenue from that project. And I believe these are the reasons why more than half of the counties in Iowa have adopted the ordinance to provide the special valuation and reclassify these items as property tax. In doing our due diligence, my department called fifty-five counties in Iowa that we identified as having a commercial wind turbine ordinance. Of these fifty-five, only one said that they successfully cited a wind turbine in their county without that ordinance. Remmer County, Remmer County told me that they have three turbines in their county and that the local utility built them. So, I called Waverly Light and Power and learned that it was actually a municipally funded project, which is why they couldn't apply the four twenty-seven B ordinance against it. Otherwise, every county we called said they adopted the four twenty-seven B ordinance prior to having any wind development in their county whatsoever. A lot of the counties that we called, they don't even have a single wind turbine in their county today. But yet, they still adopted an ordinance to cite them and provide the special valuation and reclassify them as local property tax in the event they ever get one. So, basically, I think that every county we spoke to adopted the four twenty-seven B so they could tip the project and use that new increment to accomplish a number of local goals. And some examples of how other counties in Iowa have used their wind farm TIF revenues include they financed the construction of a new jail, they're financing the school district's educational facility improvements, they're providing county secondary roads and conservation departments with funds to improve our county roads and bridges, improve our county parks, and it provides boards of supervisors across the state with the flexibility to support a number of projects that further economic development and can help grow the county tax base. As such, it's my recommendation that we initiate the process to formally adopt this proposed ordinance. And at the conclusion of tonight's public hearing, I recommend that we conduct the first reading of the ordinance. Based on discussions with the county attorney's office, it's my understanding that thirty days must pass from the initial public hearing before the ordinance can be passed and approved. And so, we've set a tentative schedule for this ordinance to be publicly discussed during four public meetings over a thirty-five-day period, and we're accepting written comments during the same timeframe. It's my hope that once people have an understanding of the fiscal impact that this ordinance will have to our county coffers, it will be acknowledged as the right decision for us. And if the state eliminates the replacement tax in the next couple of years, it's definitely the right time for us to adopt this ordinance today. And with that, I'll close my remarks and entertain any questions the board or the public may have.
Anyone?
I do want to commend your department on doing the work and getting a hold of all these fifty-five counties. And, you know, that is a lot to do. I've, you know, I've called around. When we were getting jail information, I called quite a few different counties. And I know that it's hard to sometimes get the right person or whatever and everything on the phone, but it, you know, to do all that and find the information you found, I think that's commendable.
We appreciate it. And we just want to make sure we're doing our due diligence and presenting, you know, an accurate portrayal of what's happening across the state.
Sir?
Are we in a public hearing right now, or are we in board discussion about them? Okay. So, I'm wondering if anybody has any comments from the public. I would like to hear from anybody who's concerned, either way, either supportive or not, if there are those out there.
We're suspiciously looking at you two gentlemen, because we don't recognize you from anything else, so.
I'm just here for a simple subdivision.
Okay.
So, having board discussion now, or should we close the public hearing and then have that? What?
Close the public hearing and have review session.
I'd move to do so.
Yep. Motion by Taylor, second by Reddick to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose say nay. Passes four to zero.
I do have some comments, Mr. Chair. Sure. I'm appreciative of the ordinance for the purposes of being able to cite wind in the future. I do have some questions, not only about the process, but just some concerns in general. So, my understanding from speaking with the county attorney's office is that just by having the reading itself, that's not affirmative action by the board in order to adopt this ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, after the thirty-day time, this board would have to vote in order to be able to adopt this ordinance after those public hearings and readings?
Yeah, there'll be a final yes or no vote.
Okay.
Because we have three readings on it, correct? Yeah, the readings, normally you could waive those, but given the thirty-day waiting requirement, it makes sense to go ahead and do all three of the readings.
And I guess just from a fiscal taxpayer standpoint, and I've talked to David about this, one of the concerns is you're essentially taking a utility and you're never assessing them at more than thirty percent. We have dealt with major expansions, CF, AGP, Geleda, and other entities in which we've never offered anything like that. Basically, a seventy percent abatement in perpetuity. So, I know other counties have done so, but I do think it's something that we ought to take a look at in terms of what we're offering. I know that it's posited as if you don't do this, then there's no way that they will participate. I think that's something that we should look at, potentially talking to them one-on-one and directly engaging them in, because it is a very, very large and sweet deal, seventy percent tax abatement for the next one hundred years or more, I think is something that we need to think about. I'm less concerned about being able to TIF from this area. And so, those are just some concerns that I've shared. And then, my only question for you, Dave, is as far as who provided the data for the replacement tax comparison, as against what it would be in terms of property tax?
Mid-American Energy.
Okay.
They helped me calculate the replacement tax formula, which is, it's quite confusing. And it's based on generation. So, again, you know, I think that we need to take that in consideration as far as, you know, what the board or what we as a county ultimately decide. And I, you know, I would let, you know, Dennis might be more well-versed in how to address the situation with the state and what they've communicated to local governments as far as that going away. But based on my conversations with Dennis and his office, I think that's a great concern that we should strongly consider in this decision.
So, without this, we get the replacement tax in year one. Is that right? So, we get the two hundred and ten thousand. With the ordinance, we get zero, right? Year two, you get two hundred and ten thousand, but you would get something like forty thousand at most.
Yeah, again, off the forty-year life of the project, under the scenario of the replacement tax, if it would go away in three years, we'd basically get six hundred and thirty thousand dollars compared to forty million.
Assuming that, you know, we know what the legislature is gonna do.
That's assuming, yes. And that's assuming, you know, that the millage rate stays the same. It could probably increase over time, and so, the amount that we could capture could be greater.
Okay. And do you know, you have a prognostication on the?
The replacement tax, it's kind of missing over a little bit, because commercial industrial is taxed at ninety percent of their assessed value. The other ten percent is the replacement. By the time these are built, the replacement tax will be gone. Okay, they're talking about getting them built by, I think, calendar year twenty-four. Well, we've already lost one year this current year, so twenty-two, twenty-three is the second phase of losing money. And the third phase would be twenty-three, twenty-four. So, by the time they get these built, the replacement tax won't have any direct effect at all, because it's gone.
How do you know it's gone?
Because the legislature passed a law, legislation that they're doing away, it's one of these things where the state gave it to us, now they're taking it back. They gave us money back for the loss of revenue, tax revenue, going from a hundred percent down to ninety percent, and now they're taking that ten percent reimbursed away over a period of three years.
So, in three years, it's completely sunset, and it's no longer, it's not the case that it may be, or the legislature may take action?
They took action to get rid of it.
So, it's not, it's not a.
This year will be another half a million dollars, which is our general basic fund.
Okay.
By the time it is eliminated, twenty-three, twenty-four.
So, it's going away. It's not an unsettled question.
Right, it's going away.
Okay.
The only way it's changed is that there's enough pressure on the legislature to reinstated, and I doubt they'll get it done, even though they got two billion dollar surplus.
So, without this ordinance, there's no way to capture any tax for the county? Is that what you guys are saying?
You'll get taxes, depends who's assessing it. This ordinance here, I believe, turns into commercial industrial property, which qualifies for ninety percent, but the ninety percent doesn't apply to state-assessed properties. They're assessed by the state. They have their own formulas down there, it's based, I think, on profit, productivity.
So, let me just ask. So, let me ask it this way. You say the replacement tax goes away in three years.
Correct.
Five years from now, if we don't adopt this ordinance, is there any way that the county is getting revenue from having this, right?
Yes, either way, you're getting some revenue, yes.
How are you doing so without this ordinance if it's not through the replacement tax?
This ordinance just changes from state-assessed to locally assessed.
How are you doing so if it's not through this ordinance, is my, correct?
It's state-assessed, just like Mid-America Power Company's production, transmission lines, things like that.
But the county still realizes revenue?
We get revenue from it, yes.
Okay.
We just don't know how much, because we don't know how the state will assess them, unless there's past history from other turbines from other counties. See, they're all going to this deal here, where they're reclassified as commercial industrial.
So, it'll be through some, sorry, I'm probably the slowest one up here, but it'll be through some sort of generating of revenue, even though it's not through the replacement tax, which is going away?
Correct.
Okay.
Either way, it's going to generate revenue, it's just a matter of what they're assessed at locally or what they're assessed at by state. That would be the difference. And when they're a utility, it cannot be in a TIF district. A lot of these wind turbines have been put in a TIF district. They'll pay for the roads, whatever, but they're going to repair the roads or bridges if they tear them up anyway.
Which is one of the reasons why we, you know, established the ordinance to cite them and decommission them, so we have financial assurances that they can, that they have the means to do that, and, you know, timeframes and so forth. So, I do feel that, like I said, this is just basically a good companion piece to the ordinance, the good policy work that we did just this summer. And, yeah, I think that in the long run, that the county would be ahead if we adopt it. And like I said, you know, we have already adopted the ordinance to allow these into our county. So, if somebody is successful in assembling the land, it doesn't matter if it's one or a hundred turbines, if they submit a complete application, and there's really no reason to deny it, these can happen. And so, I think that the fiscal impact is a better scenario under the four twenty-seven B ordinance. Whether you like them or not, you know, and I know that we haven't had any discussion related to, you know, renewable energy in the industry or anything like that. I believe that this is more of a conversation on the tax classification and what do you want to do with it? What do we want to do with it?
And I agree with you there. This isn't about whether to have wind turbines in the county or not, or what people do with their private land or anything like that. I share like you, the tax discussion, whether it's, you know, a seventy percent abatement into perpetuity, whether that's the right thing or not, so.
And if you think about it, what the company would end up paying would be, you know, it'd be more beneficial, I guess, if you would think about it. Never mind, I'll take.
Well, I mean, at the same time, who pays that?
Who pays?
Who pays the utilities' property taxes?
Consumers.
Exactly. And, I mean, countries like China don't tax their energy. In America, it taxes the crap out of it. I mean, you know, a gas station makes two cents a gallon. The oil company makes seven cents a gallon. The state makes eighteen and a half, or the state makes twenty-four. The feds make eighteen and a half. And then, on top of that, we'll tax the oil companies and the gas stations for doing that. And then on top of that, we'll tax the oil companies and the gas stations for doing that business. So they don't make their two cents or seven cents. They only make half of that. And the government takes it all, and the consumer pays it. So we stifle our own production by arbitrarily raising the costs, raising the cost of energy. So to me, it would make sense, we can determine what it's worth, tax it at, you know, 30%, 70%, whatever it is.
I was told that 100-megawatt project would probably have a roughly $150 million taxable valuation on it. And that we would realize 40 million over that 40-year life. That's a pretty good deal. It's better than what we have today.
And if it's a carrot that gets that kind of production here with willing landowners, then I don't see where we lose personally.
Yeah, I think that's something that we can continue to discuss, whether, I mean, I think the same could be sent of 80% or 90% are not taxing it at all. We could surely get it here.
Right.
Would you do that with any other private company or the industries that are here right now? Never. I mean, you wouldn't do that with-
We don't all, you know, look at like water production, that's done municipally, you know. Everybody's got to buy energy. So I'd rather buy it at the cheapest rate I can.
I think one of the key points you gotta look at, what's the state going to assess them at? There, there is no rollbacks. There is, well, there isn't any rollbacks. There's no abatement of taxes. What is the state assessing at? Right now, the state probably isn't because they all adopted this policy. But if you adopt this, they go to commercial, then they fund or tax at these rates, up to 30%. Is the state value going to be less than what, or more than what this 30% could generate? We don't know that answer.
And quite frankly, what's to-
What's the state going to assess them at?
What's to prevent a state legislative change to say, okay, now we just don't tax these, or now we, you know, we don't know?
Not going to happen anytime.
Yeah, so.
Depends the mood of the legislature.
Exactly.
Yeah, could. Hasn't, but it could.
Mr. Rumm, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no.
So where are we, Mr. Gill, received the, oh no, we're on the wrong one here, the, uh?
Jared, 12D, that's concerning this case.
Yes.
12D is the first reading of the order.
Yes.
I'll move the first reading.
Motion by Reddick, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
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 Post say nay. Passes four to zero.
Thank you. And again, you know, just as Joshua affirmed and Supervisor Taylor mentioned, this doesn't lock you in saying yes. It just basically opens it up for discussion and begins that process. And if the board would like to, you know, we've set the other readings for the next few consecutive weeks, December 14th and December 21st. And then there's a two-week delay, we'll come back and vote on it for a final approval. If the board would like, I could set another regular agenda item where we could publish a notice and hold additional public meetings or regular agenda items to facilitate more discussion if you'd like. Any written comment we receive, we'll report that on the last day, on January 11th, which is what we're scheduling the board to make your final decision. Thank you.
You're still up, so. We're done with C and D, and I were non-
Final staff report?
12A.
Oh, we're in the subdivision.
12A.
Okay, sorry.
We got all jacked up here.
I'm sorry. Bretton Feitinger is the owner of parcel 884702400006. He's filed a minor subdivision application to establish the Whiskey Creek 170th Edition. It's a two-lot minor subdivision.
Is that the, receive the final staff report, or are you going on, I think you're talking about B here?
No, I'm sorry, I was beginning to read it. Just some background for the record.
Okay, sorry.
But if the board is ready to receive the zoning commission's recommendation, you know, this is a pretty cut-and-dry minor subdivision. It's two lot for future development. The two lots have already been sold. And Sioux City's zoning commission has reviewed it because it does require extra territorial review. They had no conditions. Sioux City Council approved it last night, and so we recommend approval.
I'll move that, second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Reddick, is that right?
Yep.
And this is on?
12A.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post say nay. Passes four to zero. 12B, approve the Davis Estates final platting, authorize the term.
Sign the revolution.
I'll move that.
Motion by Reddick, second by DeWitt. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post say nay. Passes four to zero.
You guys sat through all of it. Do you got a comment on it?
Oh, what did we forget? We had to bypass something earlier, didn't we?
No, we're on to 13 now. Word, wow.
We're almost, item 13, county auditor, authorize the chairperson to sign letters of agreement with the city of Sioux City and Lawton.
This is part of the redistricting process. It's really kind of, you're kind of ahead of the game here, but we're all trying to operate kind of in a parallel world here, trying to get everything done. These are just agreements for, to establish precincts where, actually, the two that you're signing with the city, one of them is there is no population. That's the city of Sioux City and Lawton. And then you're also signing one for precinct 29, where there is no population there either. But it's an unincorporated area that's included in that precinct. And then precinct 28, there was an island established because of the way the census blocks were drawn up. And so there are 70 people who live in an island of Woodbury Township that will have to vote in precinct 28. So that's what you're agreeing to is with the city of Sioux City, that those people are going to be allowed to vote in a city precinct.
I won't move approval.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Reddick. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post say nay. Passes four to zero. Item 14, county sheriff, approve CIP request for new in-car video system.
21 years, Sheriff's Office. I'm here today to talk about our in-car video, not our body. We use a company called L3. It used to be called Mobile Vision, and now it's called, it's changed, it's been sold two other times. I'm not sure what it's actually called today. About a month or two ago, they notified us that they will no longer be supporting the camera, the system. It is digital, meaning we can download the camera system by coming to the office here at the sheriff's office. And we have an antenna that will, I don't know, suck the video off of the car and put it onto a server. So then we can burn them and give them to the county attorney or whoever needs them for evidence. If it breaks now, the company says, we're done. We're not making new cameras. We're not supporting, supporting the system. It's, we've been with them 11 years, and they've been sold enough times, they're moving on. So this got us starting to talk with Axon, who is our body worn camera company, and diving into other things with body worn cameras and all that. And I had them come up with a pricing agreement, a pricing quote for 31 in-car cameras. Right now, we have one camera facing forward, so it captures everything from the hood of the car out. It has no nighttime capabilities, and the deputy wears a body worn mic that, if it's not charged, doesn't work. That's the technology we're using. In today's society, if it's not videotaped, the county attorney, Josh, I'm sure, will tell us, it doesn't happen. So if we don't capture something on video, we have a hard time proving it. The new system that we're looking at is a two-camera system. It will face the front, it will also face the rear. So when we're transporting somebody or have somebody in the vehicle, we have eyes on them for our safety and for them maybe making allegations that aren't true. It has unlimited storage, so we won't be paying for, we won't need our own server. It goes to the cloud, just like our body worn cameras. They will give us onsite installation and training, cradle point routers, and all sorts of technical stuff that I'll have to give to the, if this gets approved, I'll give it to Josh to look at the contract to approve it. But what I'm asking for, what I was going to ask for, is I was going to do this in the CIP for coming up. I talked with Dennis and told him that if one breaks today, we are going to take one out of like a civil deputy that maybe doesn't use it on patrol as much to replace it. If we break two, well, there might be times when we don't have cars without cameras. It's got to that point. We can't get to technology. So Dennis said if we need it, we need to bring this forward now. Now, it says here, approve a CIP request, so I'm going to let Dennis talk on how this would get approved now. I'm not certain on that.
After doing some reviewing with Ryan up at the building services, he keeps track of all of this. And over the past year, '19, '20, and '21, we have enough funds, basically, we have about $5,000 worth of funds through cost savings, such as, say, the auditor went out and did a good job of getting bids and things, and he saved about $280,000 there. We have $5,000 here, we have $2,000 here. We do have enough money to cover without borrowing money. Not if they were eight years. That's fine, but we have to borrow the money upfront. So using the funds we have on hand, or unallocated, unobligated, that we could avoid borrowing money, pay the interest over the next eight to 10 years. So my recommendation is use the funds we have on hand, buy the whole unit, and it's covered, I guarantee, what, how many years?
It's, the package, there's two packages. What Dennis is talking about is the second package, is the one that I think is the best deal. First package is for five years, and it would cost $312,900,000. And the bad, not the bad, the problematic thing with that is it's for their Fleet III cameras, and they won't be available until the fall of '22. So we're in the same boat if something breaks. Now, we won't have cameras until the fall. They've given us another option. It's an eight-year option for $429,900. But for the first three years, they're going to give us the Fleet II cameras. And then when the Fleet III, when they get caught up installing and selling the rest of them, we're going to get a five-year plan for the Fleet III. So we'll actually, our fleet will be taken care of for eight years. The storage, the usage, if something breaks with this, with this package, we don't have a warranty. If it breaks within eight years, we turn it back in, they give us a new one. We don't, we don't have to worry about wondering when our warranty expires. So that's the one that I'm bringing forward to you. And just, it's not apples to apples, but we're spending a little over $20,000,000 a year right now on the technology we have. So it'd be $160,000 is about for eight years of, well, I know it'd be more expensive than that because these cameras are at the end of their life. If we, we'd be replacing 31 cameras, I'm sure of that. But here, we wouldn't be replacing.
So it's a $429,900 for, over eight years, is that paying for a system, or is it paying for a contract, or both?
That's everything. That pays for the contract, that pays for the system, that pays for the hardware.
So how about like year nine and 10 and 11?
Then we'd have to come back and revisit.
But are we going to have another $53,000 a year annual cost, or are all the equipment's paid for, and now we're dropping down to a $10,000 or $8,000, $5,000 a year, kind of like a service contract? Do you see what I'm saying?
Eight or nine years, you're going to need to replace them all again anyway.
Yeah, I'd say the technology won't last-
And it's going to be-
Eight years in the bay.
And that's, that's how they're doing this program, even with the body worn and the tasers. They're saying after the end of five years, they're no longer supporting what they have.
So right now, your recommendation is $429,900?
Correct.
Write a check, write a check for that.
And we have the funds to cover that right now.
Of our unobligated CIP. Otherwise, if we didn't use that, we'd have to borrow the money, and that would want our May borrowing. But I think it's better just paid if we got the funds on hand and skip the interest.
This may sound like a small question, but is there any bonus for paying upfront with one check for five years?
No, it is. And I don't have, I think, I think if we can get this, this pricing, and I'll talk to our representative, it's good till December 31st. This quote is good until the end of the year. It's going to take Josh some time, I'm sure, to look over the contract. But if this gets approved by you guys, I'm going to make sure the company says this is the price, even if we don't get it signed until the second week in January. But there, I want to say there's a 17% discount if we, but it's factored in here by just paying it off at the beginning. It would be a higher number than $429,900 if we decided to-
Yeah, that's what I was looking for essentially, yep.
Part of me thinks that, you know, under the COVID relief funds, we were encouraged to find ways to curb gun violence. And I think if we had more cameras on the vehicles, that we could catch situations of gun violence and-
Well, Keith, I agree. These cameras, they're going to be, at the end of it, they're going to be 15 years newer. We can't, we can't cap, these are going to be the high-def cameras, but we're going to be able to see better instead of looking at the grainy pixels at nighttime, wondering what we're seeing. These are going to be better for to gain that evidence.
Do you think it's worthy to look at using coronavirus relief funds for that? Or getting an opinion on that before we use other funds?
Well, to get an opinion may take you eight months. We've asked for opinions since July, and we haven't heard a word from them.
Okay. Well, you're talking from treasury.
Yep, they're the ones going to say so.
We have several guns, and not one of them has ever committed an act of violence.
I know. I'm just telling you what the COVID-
How far afield we are.
It was, it was our Treasury Department that determined how we can use those funds, and that's one of the line items in there. To me, this makes sense to use those funds for that scenario rather than other funds that we could use for other things. So.
I would agree, but it's simply an allocation we would make after the fact.
So I think we should explore using those funds. We can pay for it now with these and then reimburse it.
Is that a thing?
That's an option, yes. We know we can cover with the money we got. The option is to see if COVID could cover reimburse us for those expenses.
Because I do believe we were planning to curb gun violence with new cameras. It's just that this was, you know, sped along because the situation with the-
Well, yeah, when the company notified us, we're like, okay, we're stopped here.
And there is a bill in Congress that's passed the Senate where they're changing how you can spend that COVID money to make it very lax. Where you use it for government services and infrastructure, up to $10 million on each one, or 30% of them qualify for the $10 million screen. There is some changes coming down the road, so potentially, we could get reimbursed for it.
It depends on what you, what you're discussing right now, is your motion is to use CIP funds.
Right.
Unobligated, right?
Unobligated.
So that we wouldn't be borrowing? Okay.
Personally, I just think at budget time, we're going to want some of those unobligated CIP funds.
But we, we're not going to be able to make a motion tonight to do it from COVID funds, right?
But I think we could-
I agree with you in terms of looking, yep, I think we're all, so hearing, no further discussion then. I'll make a motion to allocate $429,900 from unobligated CIP funds with the hopes of getting an allocation back from COVID relief.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Further discussion?
Just from a logistical standpoint, there's a reference in the agenda item to getting the contract and our office reviewing it and then signing it. It'll need to come back, the contract in its final form will need to come back to the board as an agenda item when that's ready. And I think that's historically how we've done other CIP projects, is that the board approves the CIP project, and then once we actually have a quotation or contract in hand, then there's a second approval at that point. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, but tonight is basically adding this to the CIP program.
Among unobligated funds. That says upon approval of the county attorney's office on the contract. So does that mean, can they go ahead and write the check, or they need to wait till you review the contract?
No, they, right. And the contract has to come back as an agenda item at a future date.
Okay. And you already got a clue now?
No, I have an outline on one, I, I, I'll give the official one to Josh, which I'm sure she'll send it tomorrow, and then I'll get it to him tomorrow.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Uh, item 15, reports on committee meetings.
Sure. So we had a third judicial meeting and talked about client success, collaboration, and safety, which remain their top three goals, including monitoring to highlight opportunities for clients and tablets for veterans court, and incentive funds for clients, I thought were a really good use, like fare tickets for the family, and order the pool of rewarding positive behaviors. We did an annual report review and a director's evaluation, and kept looking at different departmental goals. So I thought it was a very positive meeting, and just to remind you, they meet quarterly. Also, the Les Hills Alliance, I didn't realize Rocky was there in person, I was there on Zoom. But very interesting meeting on stewardship and economic development protection, and the way that those folks protect the special natural and cultural resources. You all have an annual report in your tills, and so I thought it was very good as far as tourism and conservation, and the way that they help to preserve that in our counties. That's all I have.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Young? Anything?
Nope.
Uh, item 16, round two of citizen concerns, anything that anybody would like-
A report that's not already on the agenda. So, Mr. Sheriff's Office, I, I just want, I guess, to be on public record. We've had a run the last two, two weeks, two months, two years with mental health up in the jail. We've had four staff injured in the last couple of months dealing with mental health inmates. They're in acute psychosis, they're, they're in crisis. And I just want the board to know how hard the men and women up there are working and how, how dangerous it is. We had two, two staff assaulted today because of somebody acting out. And, and God bless the authority, and God bless you guys, this jail cannot get built soon enough. It is, it's, Sheriff's getting a lot more gray hair than I am, but it seems like lately, we've had a run of some people that, I don't know where they belong, but they're in our facility, so we're tasked with taking care of them. And it eats up a lot of our, our manpower, woman power, and it, they're hanging, the staff's hanging on by their fingertips, but they're doing a hell of a job. I just wanted you guys to be aware of that, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. 17, board concerns. Sirs? Matthew?
No.
We are adjourned.